Order. Um, I will apologize for my raspy voice. I have a little bit of a summer cold. Uh, I took a COVID test thirty minutes before I came up here and it's negative, so I'm good. It's just, I sound like crap, so. Uh, let's take a small moment of reflection for everyone here and then we'll go into the pledge with Ms. Hackett, Hackett leading it. Let's take a moment. Thank you. You stand and join me, join us in the pledge. Ms. Hackett, Hackett, will you pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For years, for a while, I was calling you Tanya.
That's right.
But stay.
It's not. Well, it's either way.
Well. I got the eight to the wrong.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
Dinner and payday, very good. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing no, we have no public hearings. We'll move to the consent agenda, which consists of the approval minutes of the June twenty-eighth meeting, certification of the fire department officers.
How you doing?
Resolution in support of the New River Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization's Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Road Funding Application for the one fourteen Route four sixty business safety improvement, safety improvement project for the town, resolution in support of the New River Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Program Funding Application for the Route four sixty widening and operational improvements in the project of the town of Christiansburg in Montgomery County, a resolution in support of the New River Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Application for interchange improvements at I eighty-one exit one fourteen, a resolution over the Smart Scale Application for the Pepper's Ferry Road Cambria Street Connector Route, resolution in support of the town of Christiansburg Smart Scale Program Funding Application for Cambria Street, North Franklin Street Corridor, resolution in support of the town of Christiansburg Smart Scale Program Funding Application for the North Franklin Street to Elm Street Northeast, resolution in support of the town of Christiansburg Smart Scale Application for the Parkway Drive Extension Phase One, and the next is for Phase Two of the Parkway Extensions.
Make a motion to approve because Senator Adams asked presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I guess my question is, I understand that it's like different items, but it seems so similar. Is that the way we always have to do it as far as like when we want to do a smart scale application?
I believe it's because each is a separate project. It requires a separate resolution for each. Am I correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is unanimous vote. Thank you. There are no introductions and presentations. Are any citizens here that would like to address the council? If so, if you come to the microphone, give us your name and resident address. Remember your comments to three minutes and address them to the chair, which is me. Anyone here wish to address council? Hearing no one, I'll close the citizens' comments section. And we will move into street committee reports. Mr. Councilman Bishop and Ms. Hackett.
Can you bring that map up for us, please?
So, the street committee is bringing before you this evening a plat boundary line adjustment between the tax parcels five hundred A one and two and tax parcels five hundred four, two A, two C, two D, and three, twenty-two thirty and twenty-two sixty, Roanoke Street. And that's a long way of saying, the dotted line that you see on this visual in front of you is where those boundary lines used to be, and the solid line that you see now is where they would like to adjust those. This does not create any new plats. This just changes the shape of the plats that they already own. They've moved this line around this building here so that it will all be inside the same plat. And then they've adjusted for this long section that you see, I believe is parcel A. Can you scroll up just a little bit? Yeah, parcel A area. Those dotted lines used to bisect that area in the ways that you see here, and they would like to adjust that, pull that sliver into parcel A and and then pull that boundary line to adjust the other parcels that they already own. The street committee has made a recommendation to approve this.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
A second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
Is this, is this the issue of changing the boundary line of the town?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's the same, it's the same property owned by Shell Chevrolet. That's between their two dealerships, so it doesn't affect the town whatsoever.
The property for the boundary adjustment that's proposed is on Halchens Road, which is basically a little bit down Roanoke Street, and you'd need to turn, turn to the left.
Okay.
I, I guess my question is, I don't have an issue with this at all, but is there a reason why we have to make the disapproval tonight? Is that, is there a reason can we wait for two weeks?
I don't think so.
Are they selling it or is this gonna?
That's, that's, that's council's discretion. I'm not aware that they're selling it, and you know, I don't think they have it under contract. It's, I think it's just kind of for their, their own benefit, but.
What would the reason be for waiting two weeks?
I just think that it's always good to wait, just because we always have the, I don't have nothing against this proposal. I'm just saying that it's always good to wait for the two weeks. Just these maps, like for example, were just presented to us tonight. And now that I don't trust your judgment as far as like the presentation and everything else, I just think it's always good to, to reserve the, you know, for any questions, concerns, or anything like that.
But this is all, all of these parcels are owned by the same organization, so this wouldn't, this doesn't affect any other citizen. I mean, it's all within their own parcels, so it should not impact anyone or the town or anything else.
So.
But if there was, for example, I know there is not, well, I don't know that, but let's per se, there was a sale or something going on, and this will affect someone else later on. Um, it will also, it will be good to just kind of, because this is not being shown to the public until now, right?
It doesn't need to be shown to the public. It's the property owner's requesting the change, so there's no need for a public hearing. It did not have to go before Planning Commission. It's just a simple boundary line adjustment. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Very good. That is again a unanimous vote. Thank you. And thank you for your comments and questions. Discussion in action by Mayor and Council, the appointment of Kevin Faust as the at-large representative to the New River Valley Emergency Communication Regional Authority for the remainder of Allen Fabiam's term, which is April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Kim Faust is the retired police chief at Virginia Tech.
Correct, and he was a vice president, I believe, for operations at Tech, and he's former, I guess FBI regional supervisor for Western Virginia.
I will make a motion that we approve his appointment to the New River Valley Emergency Communication Regional.
A second. Got a motion and a couple seconds.
Just let, let you know Kevin couldn't be here tonight, but he does plan on coming to a future meeting.
Now, this at-large member, is that something all entities have to agree to this one?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate him taking time to come see us.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, that is six oh. An agreement for wing deliveries owned at Christopher Recreation Center, sixteen hundred North Franklin Street.
I will make, go ahead.
No, no.
I will make a motion that we approve the agreement with wing delivery zone at Christopher Rec Center at sixteen hundred North Franklin Street.
I'll second.
Very good. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six oh. Uh, we have all here a discussion Montgomery County, Blacksburg, Christiansburg Regional Tourism Office. Is that Mr. Wilson? Is that your name?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, I just, I share concern that I, I don't feel we're getting our money's worth out of the, the county tourism office. And while I've only been at it for six months, I know we're gonna, we have about fifty percent of their budget, and, and I've yet to see anything promoting our town in my six months in, in doing this. And so I just think we need to have a serious discussion about, you know, either something picks up or, you know, we, we look at doing something different with that hundred and seventy thousand dollars for our town or internally in the town instead of, in my opinion, throwing it away.
You know the comments?
I actually have to agree with a lot of what Tim Wilson's concerns are. I think that, you know, um, we definitely need to see that we're getting our money's worth on something. This is a lot of money off our town's budget, and I personally feel like we can do that job here internally and maybe do a good job. We have events that we have been doing, and they, I don't feel like they have been pushed a lot. We are doing a good job with what we got. And I think, you know, Christine Annie, it's really good, maybe, you know, even give her an increase in salary later on or whatever, but my opinion will be the, you know, I just don't understand some of the things about even tourism. I don't know their plans, their goals. I don't see anything going on right now. Um, you know, there is plans for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, but that's a long way until we get there. Um, you know, there is concerns for me personally about, you know, where we, our tourism office is right now. Our tourism office is on Pepper Street right now, in a residential area personally, you know? And for us to be able to go to a tourism office in the middle of a touri-, uh, residential area, I don't feel like is the main, we're not, we're not fulfilling what we should be doing with that money. We are here as a, you know, making sure that the taxpayers' money is used in a good way, and I think over the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're spending nearly on this, we could do so much better. We have events of, that is costing us over seventy thousand dollars a year, and we're doing that because we want a good quality of life. Um, there is a lot of, we want to make sure that the perception of the town of Christiansburg is a positive environment, and how do we express that to the rest of the communities not here, but everywhere else. I think we can do a lot better.
I think you're talking about what we would call local tourism. But what tourism is doing is, is advertising us at this point in, I think, three different states, and the rest stops in promoting what's available in the town of Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and Montgomery County. And, and let me reiterate, and, and you all may well know this, but, you know, this, this one percent of the, of the lodging tax revenue, that does, that is not our citizens' taxpayers' money. Those are people that come here, stay here, and they may stay here and use it as a center to go tour Floyd. It may, they may come here to visit, you know, the Parkway, you know, areas where there are not sufficient motels and hotels. So this doesn't cost our taxpaying citizens a penny.
I will say I have to disagree with that, because the reality is, we do pay taxes as well here in the town of Christiansburg as we go shopping.
Well, Ms. Hackett, let me tell you something right now. You're talking about tourism money. You're talking about the lodging tax. It's not anything to do with your sales tax, your meals tax. It is lodging tax that is paid when somebody rents a hotel or a motel room in the town of Christiansburg. It is not meals tax. It is not, it's not real estate tax. Unless you stay at a Holiday Inn or Hampton Inn three nights a week, then you're not paying any of that tax. So this is money that is generated, and, and, and to me, and, and again, this is, will be council's decision, but, uh, we average about one point seven million dollars a year in transit lodging tax, and that's what it's called, transit lodging tax. So, you know, I don't think it's a bad deal to, to wedge a hundred and seventy dollars against a return on one point seven million.
I'll, I'll, you want to go ahead?
I'd like to.
All right.
I mean, just as, as perspective, both of you, but this is something that our businesses, which are, are hoteliers and moteliers, they want us to use this money, obviously to fill their rooms. So at the end of the day, it is a Christiansburg tax base that we're using. May not directly apply to the citizens, and it's only one percent of people who come here from out of town and stay, for instance, like Virginia Tech events or Aquatic Center events. But it is, there is some responsibility we owe to our merchants who collect that. There's a reason why they did that, and there's a background to it. Um, I think Mike and I and Sam, you might remember this. It started way back when, when I was first elected on council, and the chamber got it, and there were some, and that's when the chamber was located in Blacksburg, and there were some discrepancies on how that money was being used. Luckily, because I had the same question as Tim and Joanna are saying, what are we getting out of it? You know, you know, somebody always told me you have to justify your job, right? So I have the same questions, but then it moved from the chamber to a joint partnership with the county in Blacksburg and this tourism what's created. Not really sure how many years. It's still sort of new, but I understand what you're saying. Before I yield it to Casey, what's the, what's the contract state if we decide not to participate?
You'd need to give a twelve-month notification.
So one-year notice.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I personally think it would be a grave mistake to, to break out of this partnership with, and that's what it is, a partnership between the county, Blacksburg, and ourselves. This is not, you know, this is not like the chamber who goes, and it's a membership-based organization that can promote individual businesses. That's not what tourism is, is, exists to do. And I think to Mike's point, you see them working at Lambsburg, at the state line. You see them working in other places as well, and there's a synergy that gets broken. I'm looking at this sort of very higher level. Now, I mean, we could talk about taxes, and I think there's justification there in itself. There's a synergy that gets broken in that partnership if we break away from this. So I can tell you right now, I would, I would be very much against breaking up the partnership that has existed now for many years. You also got to consider, uh, there's been new leadership in that office in the last year. That takes time. That builds time. And quite frankly, I think, uh, Mr. Rotenizer is doing a fantastic job of that in what's being going forward. So, um, I definitely hold a different opinion there, and, um, I, I would, I would absolutely vote to keep, to keep this together as it's set.
So Casey, isn't it true that the museum is gonna, has a contract right now to raid to the tourism office, fifteen thousand dollars?
That's correct. They're in our old building. That's correct.
Okay. The sale part of the museum.
This is, this is, if, if you're trying to get a conflict of interest, I don't see it. I'm looking at something much larger picture here, so I'm sorry. I don't see that.
I would echo, I think, what Casey has said. With David just coming on board, he, I, we don't think he's had any, had a chance to even address any of our concerns. So if there's, if there's visibility that we're missing that we would like to have, I think we could start by asking for that and asking, where are you advertising and what are you advertising? I know it's hard to measure what that return on investment is, but I did take some time. I did go to the website. It does promote a lot of things that we have here in Christiansburg. I think there's room to add a few things, but, I mean, I think the work's getting done, and I think that we are in a prime position to really increase the prospects for tourism with the park being developed, with the train station coming at some, you know, in the future. Like, I think there's opportunities where tourism can really increase, and, and we're going to be more connected to people who want to travel here and see what there is to offer. So I would say, before we decide to just kind of cut the legs out from under this, this partnership, I would want us just to talk about, what is it that we would like some visibility on? What visibility would we like increased? And then how can we get that information so that we know work is being done? Because it's going to be work we don't typically see, since it's not local tourism. It is outside of our areas. Really, it's hard for us to have eyes on that. But I think that, that David could provide that if we ask for it.
All right. I've been on the committee for a number of years now, and there's things that we don't see sitting up here. I know the previous director, they did, they ran out of state to set up at travel, at booths and stuff like that, to bring people to Montgomery County, and hopefully those people in Montgomery County will come to Christiansburg. So once again, you know, everyone's made a good point far as keeping it. You know, I'm definitely in favor of keeping the partnership going, because once again, David has only been in the position several months now, and we have talked off and on a couple times to try to get some ideas. But I think we as committee, town council, we need to ask David or tell, invite him to come and show us, what are you doing for the town? He hasn't had a chance to do that yet, and, you know, and we want to dissolve, well, dissolve the partnership, and I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My, my statement was to put him on notice, to either, to either.
Would like to see more.
Either give us a return on our investment or that we will make a, a, you know, I, I'll push this more seriously, you know? And, and if you go to, if you pull up the, the GoMonV A dot com website, and you go to the page of Christiansburg, it's got Sinklin Farm as downtown Christiansburg for the picture. And then if you click on pictures inside that, it, it links you to Roanoke. It does not represent our town, the, the tourism website. So, and I, and I, and, and I had a conversation with Mr. Rotenizer about those issues in February. So. So, I mean, this is not a clean cut. Like, we can't make a decision tonight. And I, I'm not asking for that. That was not what I was asking for. It's, it's a one-year notice. Yes. So even if we voted to give a one-year notice, we can still reverse it later down the road prior to the end of one year.
Absolutely.
Because the longer we wait, and I'm, I'm just saying, it, it's a long notice. Yeah. And then, of course, we can always change direction in several months when we see that there's actually tangible benefits to the town.
I really like what you said.
So you put a, are you putting a motion on the floor to vote tonight, or we're just putting on our notice that we'd like to have more information and more stuff from David?
I'll leave that to Tim and Joanna.
The what?
I'll leave that to Tim and Joanna, whether or not they want to.
Dissolve, give notice.
I, my intent tonight was to, to make sure that, that, that those of us sitting here understood my concerns. Um, I, I didn't come here tonight with the intent of, of voting to dissolve, but, but, you know, in my mind, I, you know, they've had six months to do a few simple little changes that haven't happened. Um, so they, sometimes people need to know we're serious when we ask them to do something.
We want to make sure that we tell the, the citizens of Christiansburg that we cared about where their money's going. I, I agree that this is all of our taxpayers' money. And I mean, that money, when it comes here, stays here. What are we going to do with it?
So at the moment, Mayor, I'm, I'm not, I'm not proposing a motion to, to cancel it tonight, but I withhold that for a later date potentially.
Ms. Hackett, are you putting in a motion to vote tonight?
I think I am in agreement with Tim Wilson. I think that we would like to see a lot more for Christiansburg.
Simple question. Is it, are you putting a motion or not?
No.
Okay, very good.
If I put a motion forward, would I get a second on that?
Yes, I will.
All right. I'll make a motion that we give a one-year notice.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second.
Then my point of discussion would be is make it very clear what it is that you want to get out of it. If you're not communicating it, I mean, and it sounds like, Tim, you've had those discussions, but for, for Henry and Joanna, if, if you're going to put that on the table, you got to make sure you make it clear what those changes look like.
Okay. You mean, you mean you want us directly involved in those changes, telling what we want?
I don't think it's fair for you to put that on the table if you're not going to communicate what it is that your problem is.
I want tangible benefits to the town of Christiansburg.
What is, what is that?
Present what you are advertising, referencing the town of Christiansburg. How are you filling our hoteliers' coffers? How are you getting the tax money out of students at Rafford and Virginia Tech?
So, so be clear about that.
Yeah, that's pretty clear.
Well, it is now.
But I shouldn't have to explain.
And we, you know, every year we have, and I don't think we've gotten it yet, but I think every year David Spata Suster came to us with a report on the tourism dollars that are generated within Montgomery County, and it appears, if I remember correctly, it was seven to ten million dollars in tourism money tracked into the town of Christiansburg.
But that is not fair to say that it was made by one person. This is fair to say that we have a lot of things to offer. We have an athletics center. We have facilities. We have a wonderful town.
I don't know that. We have a park coming online.
Exactly. I mean, there is a lot of stuff that can happen in the next year.
We have a motion and a second for one year, for a one, for a one-year notice.
I like the, let's, you want something direct?
Yeah.
I want the website updated. It should show our downtown. Do you, do you agree with that?
I, I agree, and that's a tangible. I, I can, I can.
I'd like to see our events and, yeah, yeah. I'd like to see our events. I'd like to see more of our things showcase it. I apologize.
And thanks for the notice, Tim.
You know what I also would like to see? I would like to see a real schedule of events. If we have an event happening, the tourism agency should have all of those things set up in the calendar where they are visible for anybody that looks at them, from California, from Florida, from anywhere in the state. I want to know what those events are.
Yeah, and right, right now it says that everyone's welcome to come, but it doesn't say quite what they are. A question I have maybe, I don't know, Sam, if you'll know the answer to this. Is there a staff at the tourism office? And were there some open positions? Because I recall that there were open positions that had not been filled. Are those, do you know?
There is still a position open, correct, David? Uh, for, I, I'm calling the position assistant, and which I just brought up, seeing stuff on the website. That is something that the committee has been talking about, you know, putting more information out. But once again, we've got, we want to be careful how we do that. So that's what I'm saying. Stuff like this, it's going to take, I'm not making excuses for David by any means, but things don't happen overnight. I mean, you've got new leadership. He's trying to get help, and we, as the committee, we met last, what was it? Last month. And we discussed stuff like, I said, we want to see more invites. You know, do we want to see everything that the town does, like, on their website? That's something we have been discussing. So.
I mean, the town has done a really good job advertising for a lot of things, including Christine Annie wrote a beautiful article about the new park coming up with the V M L. I mean, there is a lot of stuff that you can do.
I, I think we should go ahead and vote on this.
Yes.
But I would say, Casey, I do see a, and it's all personal. If you do not see a conflict of interest between them renting the, the museum and, and the museum getting a direct income from that, and you're their director, I understand that. You don't perceive it, but I do perceive it as a conflict of interest.
Well, we have an attorney sitting right there. That's what we pay them for.
Reed's going to tell you it's how you perceive it, and then it's public.
Reed, can you speak for yourself?
I'm sorry, Sam, yeah.
Well, it's up to Casey. I mean, he's, he's got to evaluate his conflict there. Um, Casey and I have talked before about potential conflicts with the museum, and I think he's made a, a disclosure previously.
So we have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk?
Can we cut?
Can I have one?
I'm sorry. Clarify. I, I just need to get clarification on what the motion is.
To put him on a one-year notice effectively.
We agree to the contract and give them one-year notice.
So at the end of one year, what does that mean for us? That we just dissolve or we, where we cancel and we can't?
It passes tonight, then at the end of one calendar year, right?
I think it would be one year.
Then our relation, our partnership stops.
Have the opportunity to. We have the opportunity to-
So, it gives them basically one-year notice to get us what we want or at that point we will end it.
Correct. And we can always reverse it later down the road.
Guess what I'm saying is, I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with saying we would like to see some progress over a year and this is the notice that we will, we plan to dissolve. But I just wanna make sure we don't miss that deadline because I think the partnership is a good thing, I'm fine with the motion, but I, I don't want us to miss anything and dissolve the relationship on it.
Sir, do you think two months will give you enough time to come back and talk to us about what you're delivering for the town?
I don't think you need to.
Why don't you come with a prepared, um, presentation? And I just wanna say, there's nothing personal, I think when you came and talked to us, I thought that was an incredible idea of putting, um, some sort of identification of the town of Christiansburg across the Huckleberry Bridge. I mean, and that, that's somebody who's showing some initiative and thinking and things like that, but I just wanna see more tangible, uh, whatever that may be for Christiansburg and our, and our, and our hoteliers.
I'd like, while we're kicking it, kicking it around, you know, I think that probably it would be a good idea, and I don't know how many members of the tourism committee we have, but I believe it would be a good idea for us, probably Blacksburg and probably Montgomery County, to have their recreation directors come to those meetings so that they're the ones to put out the schedules of, of events, right? So, they could, I mean, at least go to them, give them the feedback of what's coming.
They're not the only ones doing events around here, Sinclair Farms, everybody else is doing events, so.
Well, I, I feel like we're getting off the subject, we're talking about rearranging personnel and Brad definitely wants to go, I encourage that, but right now we're giving a, yeah, one-year notice with a review in two months.
And I also have a, a one question before we go on with that. They are assigned funds that are for the tourism agency. How much are those today and what will happen if we cancel out of the partnership?
Sorry, what, what funds?
They are assigned funds.
Fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent? I think it's around thirty thousand typically, twenty, twenty, twenty to thirty, no, annually.
No, was there an assigned fund for the tourism agency that they probably have-
Fifteen percent of one percent.
For the future expenditure for the building or anything like that, for, for tourism? So, I guess that question will be for David. Do you have an assigned?
I'd say it's twenty to thirty thousand approximately.
In reserve?
Eight years?
No, no, in, in the town budget, that's what it would be.
No, no. That's the town budget. Her question is, how much money is the tourism association holding in unassigned?
Exactly. Thank you, Bob.
I don't know the answer to that because I haven't seen the financial in a while.
I think David could probably answer it hopefully better than I could.
Is that aside for future visitors and development? Anything like a new vehicle? Anything to that?
Can you tell me what's the amount that's put away on, alright? And what will happen if that partnership was dissolved?
I believe that would, uh, uh, be expected to be divided evenly is, I think how it's, it's written in the agreement.
You probably don't have that answer right now, but maybe you can check.
It's, it's specified in the agreement.
So, we're voting tonight to put them on a twelve-month notice.
And a second.
The contract, per the contract.
Ms. uh, Ms. Henlon, would you call counsel? I'm not sure I got all this.
With a two-month review.
With a two, with a review in two months, where we can reverse our decision, if we make a decision, too.
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
No.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
It's four to two, so we will put them on a twelve-month notice, uh, ask David back two to three months, whatever you can. Uh, and Randy, that night I will, I'll ask you to reserve his presentation as the only presentation so that we can have enough time to, to go through it. I would totally expect we not make a decision that night after we, but we need to have the stuff to digest.
Could I make a suggestion? That we have a work session so we don't have anything else on our minds that night so we can clearly think about this since they are on a contractual one-year notice?
Okay, sounds good to me.
Does that go with counsel?
When they bring this back, I would like to see a plan of action for the following year as far as what that means.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll get a lot of stuff that night.
Okay, so, next, if we're done with, with that one, we'll move to the facade grant community support policy?
And that's me again.
Okay.
I just, I wanna make sure it's at the, you know, at the forefront, we talked about it in our, our weekend retreat and I remember listening during budget sessions when the topic came up about how we were gonna give community support money or how y'all were gonna give community support money. Um, and, and it was discussed that, that, yeah, we kinda talk about every year at budget time, we need to review this and look at how we're gonna do it. And it appears as though it never gets done or it hasn't gotten done, the, uh, the council or committee or whatever you wish to do. Um, but I think there's organizations that are taking advantage of the town personally and, uh, and so we either come up with a plan that stops these organizations from consistently taking more and more money, looking at loopholes, and they're, they're doing it because we, we have, it's right out there that they can do it, so shame on us. Um, however, you know, um, like I said in my email to you, it's like putting, you know, contents in cup are hot. You know, somebody's gonna get, somebody's gonna lose money, you know, because you have one or two organizations that wanna abuse, you know, the town taxpayers' money. So, again, this is one of those where I'm saying, you know, we gotta quit talking about it, it's July and in April, we said, we'll, we'll look at it in July. And it is July what? Twelfth. And nobody's talked about having this meeting to determine what we were gonna do.
I think Mrs. Hicks, uh, Mrs. Tweedy has, you're working on some of that stuff that we're getting from the county?
And we were agreeing to try and, uh, Randy has on his agenda tonight for a work session for that and I do have some materials for you and we had hoped to do it.
Prior to me losing my stuff?
I am just like overwhelmed right now because we just gone live on the new system and we'll work with new systems. And so, we've just been a little-
And so, my concern is that we come up with a policy that, that, that says that you can only apply once every three years, every five years, you know, and, and there's a frickin' ceiling on the amount that, that, that they can apply for and you can't apply for community support and facade grant and this grant? That, so we gotta do something or either, either throw this junk out the window.
So, Tim, I, I still agree with you on this and I, this has bothered me for several weeks, Ashley, as far as I'm part of central business right now and I'm gonna read you all the statement for central business. It says the central business district committee considers matters regarding the development and vitality of the town's commercial districts. So, when we did the facade grants, it was well-known that it was to help business owners and we have been having meetings in central business and I don't know where, and I kinda hate that Andrew Warren is not here right now because the reality is that Andrew or whoever was in charge of this, they should not be creating the rules without Ashley us being able to see those guidelines. I didn't get an email receiving those guidelines before the, those applications were sent out. And so, I don't know where I am missing this, but it's, it's not there, so.
So, I, I acknowledge that-
I kinda don't understand why it was put in there as far as like nonprofit organizations being able to apply for this nonprofit, for this-
My intent's not to sort this out tonight, but to say that we have to do something to, to tighten the reins on all these things. I acknowledge there's some, some wonderful work on the facade grants that's gone out, that's happened. I, I see it, I don't, I don't argue that, I'm just saying that-
It should be for the business owners, not the not-for-profits that we have funded sixty-eight thousand dollars this year.
That's my point. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so they're applying for multiple grants from the town.
Yeah, and, and-
We can, we can take care of that. We can take care of that really easily by just denying their request and that'll be done.
But it's still a loophole in our system and that's what I'm asking for us to-
As we said in our, in our retreat, uh, we've talked about this and there is a, you know, we've, we've talked about it in the liaison meetings with the managers and the mayors and the information is being sent. I can understand if you're trying to run two bookkeeping systems, it may not be on the top of your list, but I could assure you that we will, we will get it. We may not get it in July, but certainly in August.
I roughly should be able to get it by the end of July or early, early August in labor.
So, what do you, what, what do you present?
At least what information I have to bring into just, there's some thoughts and ideas that we've had over time about how to look at and evaluate the requests for community programs, maybe how they're categorized, putting limits on any one entity, putting the overall cap, all thoughts and ideas that you can consider in terms of how you want that program to look going forward, but it definitely needs to be done in July or August of this year, otherwise going into budget, we're gonna be in the same boat again and it's not gonna get done early enough that we have new rules and policies and things like that. So, I will send out to you sort of that format within the next week if you have, um, that is really ideas and thoughts for you guys to consider about what you wanna put into policy. I'm, I'm gonna try and write a policy at this point until you all have some conversation about what direction do you wanna take. If you want a limit, okay, we can put that in policy, you know, however it goes. But I, I think it's definitely a work session, really over a lot of conversation, I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion about who we wanna cap, who we wanna categorize or who we wanna prioritize certain types of organizations. So, I will get something to that effect out to within the next week or two and then I don't know what Randy has on the, um, horizon for a program work session, um, but we can hash it out there and then hopefully within a few weeks of that, come up with a policy that you're all to be comfortable with and can truly put it forward.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have, Mayor, yes, sir, I'm satisfied.
So, how is the facade grant funded?
It's funded through, through general fund.
And who decides who gets what?
The committee.
The Arts Committee.
Okay, so it goes through your committee, you make a recommendation to council or not?
No.
So, it doesn't even come before? So, once we fund it in the annual budget, it's basically left up to the central business committee to decide who gets those funds, correct?
Correct.
Yes, but I don't, I, I am the head of the committee and I don't agree as making those decisions without getting some kind of direction from you guys. I would really like a direction as far as from town council regarding, I understand it's great money, but I want your input. If you guys agree along with me or if you don't, if you disagree, that facade grants should be prioritized and it should only be this, for businesses.
Well, and that's what we're gonna have the work session about. We'll, we'll, we'll make those rules.
I thought it was for community support.
Well, and it's for both.
No, no, you're talking about two separate things.
We can put it together if they need.
I do wanna check, uh, can we, and I'll ask Reed, can we vote tonight that any facade grant approval has to come through council as a recommendation? Can we vote? Is that something to vote on or just, is that something to agree with?
Just make it a motion. A little second because I'm part of the central business.
You could establish that as a policy, I think.
I, yes, I-
I would like to make the motion if you don't make it.
What sense? Work. Is it on? Yeah.
I would like to make the motion.
You're on that committee?
That any of the facade grants that come to town council that we are to approve, come to town council for approval.
You approve through central business committee?
Yeah.
Gets then presented to town council for final approval?
Final approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Can we also have in there as far as-
Grandfathered in? Are you grandfathering all the grants in this year or that have got approved?
I think, no, because there is a lot of loopholes that I, I feel is not fair. We have a time for community support grants and if you didn't apply or if you applied, you shouldn't be able to get those as well as everything else. I think there is, for me, there is a big concern for community support. We're talking about, you know, oh, you know, there was a comment in one of the central business, oh, we shouldn't give it to, uh, religious organizations or whatever, that's kind of discrimination. I just, I personally feel, that's my feeling that-
Well, that's, that, you're talking about changing the, the contract, uh, to where you, you're going in a lot of different directions, so I would almost invite you and Casey to work on the facade grant application and requirements and then you can present that at a later date. But my motion is that no facade grant gets funded this year until it comes from a recommendation, even if it's split from the central business committee and has to either be approved or not approved by council.
So, are you saying all the folks who've been, already been awarded, reviewing that?
They haven't been awarded.
They haven't been awarded?
They have been awarded and needs to come through council.
There's like fifteen applications and a whole bunch of them are nonprofits.
But it's very concerning to me that any organization would go through our, our community support application and then look to, I mean, that money, that's a lot and, and anticipate that money instead of saying, oh, we're gonna get this here and now we're gonna get this over here.
Understood.
And I understand what you're saying, Tim.
I have two motions on the floor, you have seconds of each.
You have one.
You have your motion. You have a second.
I'll second.
And your motion is that everything that comes through for them, for the facade grants, comes to council and we approve it, no grandfathering in of any of the applications that have already been put forth?
Yes.
So, I have made a motion before, do I have to cancel that?
Withdraw?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion from previously.
Ben, did you have this kind of problems in Salem? If you, if you don't know, Ben was head of the facade grant in Salem and he worked with us a lot getting this one established.
So, Ben, why don't, instead of you telling us what Salem does, cause we're Christiansburg, why don't you get with Casey and Joanna and sort of work, work out a good application process?
My, my, Mr. Showalter, my question was, did you have this problem with not-for-profits applying in Salem?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, you answered the question.
Sorry, Mike, I thought you were, you were going down that road.
No, 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 no. I just, I just wanted to know since-
Thank you.
And Casey is an ex, Casey, Ben is an expert in this thing, uh, he's damn good, we hired him away from Salem, so there you go. All right, very good, so.
I apologize for, my hair's a little up on this one, so.
Literally, probably. Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Now, Mike, there is a second part to this and that's Tim and Mitch, and I just wanna make sure I understand the community support grants and this is for me to understand, okay? So, Tim, you're talking about on page eighty on the current year's budget, everything from uh, the Boy Scouts of America all the way down, um, all the way through that list, which ends at the Y M C A, Virginia Tech, but that also includes ACE program. Would you include that as, I, I'm just curious, would you include the ACE program in with that?
I would.
Okay, all right, that, that's-
But, but there's six of us.
Right.
So.
I guess that's what we-
But I think that's when you have any, you know, because you don't have any-
But we need to take a vote on the first motion before we start.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I ain't sorry. The motion is-
I'm sorry, I kinda went down another path.
If, if I, if I understand the motion correctly, and I'm not sure at this point whether I do, but the motion is that the central business committee will approve the facade grants, bring them to council.
Make a recommendation.
Let me finish, I got this. Make a recommendation to council and council will vote on those recommendations. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I can do this.
And I'd, I'd say recommendation, cause it could be a, I've been part of committee where there's a split vote, but it still is brought, it still is expected to be brought before council, even though both committee members disagree on how to proceed.
So, are you clear now on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I think I am.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
It's five one. Thank you.
Mayor, before we move away from the topic, may I ask one question? It didn't make sense to ask in the discussion. I don't know. I'm sorry. When did, when do the applications open for the next grant cycle for community support? And is it possible that we're going to have this policy, I'd like to put the, our policy work on a timeline to have it done before our next round of applications.
February first is when we typically open the.
February first, you said? Okay.
They have to be.
So I'm sorry, they do February first.
What, and it opens usually in December? Okay. So I would really like to see us have that squared away before they open for that next round. So there's no confusion.
Are you sure that those open? Because my understanding, they just open around June or May, wasn't it?
Should be July.
We're talking about community support.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're due February first and we typically put the application, like Bill said, into December is typically when we post it, the community support application.
Is the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three application available right now since we're in the new year? It's not. So nobody can just come in and get it in a paper?
Well, there is an application on our website.
Right, can you?
Pull it down and send it in.
Nothing would happen?
Right, but you know, if you have an application on your webpage starting the next fiscal year.
We could have that application.
I would, I would feel more comfortable until we make some hard decisions on what to do with it, to have that off the webpage. And not giving out to any organization that comes in until we make a decision.
Yeah. And knowing that timeline, I think we just need to keep that in mind so that every direction you all ask for, we're really responsive to, to make sure that nothing from us holds up preparing that policy.
You're good. So Mike, since I'm trying to dominate the whole meeting tonight.
You're not trying, Henry. Here's your.
I just want to, I just want to make clear, you know, where this came from. It used to be years ago, I call it the old bar napkin. Somebody would just come in and write, I need this. And council would do it.
It has moved, it's moved.
And it's gone to a grant application process and we've all seen it. I think it's pretty good. But what it always boils down to is, and the reason why we have the process, and I'm a member of the Finance Committee, is it, it's a majority of council that approves it. And it's not a great process and Tim is right. It's something I dread every year going into budget because we spend so much more time talking about it.
But we didn't this year. Not nearly as bad as we have in the past. Really?
I think there were some heated words.
There was heated words. It wasn't the link though.
I would rather be concentrating on the regular budget.
I agree with you.
But I do want to say that, you know, even if we get rid of this, the grant application process, any of these organizations can come, do a presentation and ask for support from council. At any individual meeting, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Well, I think that's one of the things we're trying to do away with.
Well, that's what we've sort of done, is keeping them from coming to council in a formal session and then us having to vote on each particular organization, right?
Well, we normally had those presentations coming prior to the budget and prior to the vote on the budget when we had someone that wanted to come before us. I believe, I don't think we've had anybody come after we have. I think once we have, have brought this to the budget and to the council and we have taken our totally legal straw poll. That we've not added anything to since then.
Right.
So are we done? Depending on.
If we're going to do this, it's going to be a policy that we can stick to because I do see organizations, if we put term limits on it, if we do do a. You know, you can only apply for so much money. I do see these organizations coming back and possibly asking for more. I'm just looking at that. It may not happen. If, if we even do something like that.
So if we put a term limit, they're going to come and ask for twice the amount and carry it over for the next year?
Or each year, each year ask for it.
And I, you know, I understand this and I, and I see where you're coming from, but I do caution council and their thoughts is, you know, if we, if you put term limits. If you put caps, you're going to cripple some organizations that do a hell of a lot of good for the citizens of the town of Christiansburg that we don't see, that we can't do. So I'm just asking you to think about that.
To jump in? And that's why we have a work session?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is, this is getting like work right now, Sam.
This is number. This is our second work session.
All right. So we're moving on to school resource officers. Mr. Showalter, Ms. Hicks? Do what? School resource officer?
Now you want to hear from me?
Huh?
Now you want to hear from me?
I, it was asked to be put on the agenda about school resource officers.
I believe a few of our, our council members wanted to put that on there. So I believe at the end of our last meeting, as we were leaving, we were informed that the county. Has approved putting resource officers in all the schools, but not the ones.
The schools that are not currently having, so they're hiring two, I believe it is, maybe three. And that's for Eastern Montgomery, I believe Belmont, Bellevue, out on one fourteen. And I want to say maybe one of the Auburn Strand schools.
So and that, and I went and actually took notes on the Board of Supervisors meeting. My concern is it's only for schools outside of each of the towns and we're talking, we're a Christiansburg Town Council, so let's talk. That's what I wanted council to talk about.
So let, let, let me, before we go too deep into this thing, let, let me just state to council that Mr. Wingfield and I certainly have that on the agenda. For the meeting that we're going to have with the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors and the County Administrator later this month. That is an item, direct item on, on the agenda.
I understand that. But I do think it's an issue that our board, which these are their facilities. And I watched that video and there was a lot of our and their. And they're being Christiansburg's responsibility to supply those officers to the Montgomery County schools.
If I'm not mistaken, Henry, I don't think we have any obligation whatsoever to provide school resource officers.
We don't. We.
Is that true, Mark?
And, and we don't. And we, we picked up that mantle years ago, right? When you came to us and said, hey, this isn't going to happen through the county. So we need to, we need to supply those and council agree with that to protect our students.
Help me pick my mind here, Henry. I think when we did this, at the first year, there was a, they covered a hundred percent. The next year, maybe it was.
That's a grant.
Well, that's how we covered them, was the grant money.
Okay. Christiansburg?
I did tell the council. Six years ago, it was a blank position. So that was no entry for resource officers. And that was a grant position, but we did report for that. That was on a full grant. We had to pick that position up.
And Mark, I mean, where, well, I can ask about, and so does the county fund any of our officers in their facilities?
No.
Okay.
And so just to be clear here, Chief, we understand the duty, not the obligation.
Absolutely.
To, to protect our, our children and our schools if the county doesn't do so. However, I think our position is that, is, is that what we want you guys to look at the county and go, wait a minute, here's, once again. You're asking the town to pick up your responsibility financially. And, and so we, we will, I, I don't think that I'd be an objection to, to Chief, your, your guys still, our guys still. Being the school resource officer, we just think the county has some fiscal responsibility in, in covering those positions. Is that correct, Henry?
It is, it is. But I, I do think it was disturbing if, if we've all, hopefully you've all taken the time to watch the video. I mean, it was referred to Christiansburg, their schools.
Yeah.
Which, I'm telling you right now, you walk into the Montgomery County School Board.
And say, hey, it's our school.
Council member or the Board of Supervisors say, here's what we've decided, or even a resolution from us to them, here's what we decided we want to occur in the schools. What do you think they're going to say to you?
Our schools.
Huh?
If we say, we're, we want to do this at our schools.
It's our schools. So.
Yeah, but this is public. I just want to make sure that, that people that watch this don't think that we're sitting here with any, any idea that we're going to pull school resource officers. Because that's, that's nowhere near the intent of this discussion or wherever the cameras, any of you who are watching, right? That is not what we're saying.
I'm not against police. I am not against police. You're not against police.
No, no, I'm just saying that, that. I agree with Henry that. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just think when, when you see the video, there's precedence that.
The ghost.
That, hey, we're protecting the schools, but only the schools outside of each of the towns, even though they're our responsibility for all of us. That's, that's what I see. And we all hear that term almost every day, inclusiveness, right? Well, guess who wasn't included in, in that protection is, and there's a lot of county stu, I would say you have county students and we're, hey, aren't we all county residents? I mean, am I the only one paying county taxes?
I'm not.
And I live in Christiansburg? Right. So I, I do think that the Board of Supervisors picked winners and losers in this. And there should have been no decision made until all the schools were included in that conversation. And it's their schools, but they weren't included in that conversation. And the decision was made and set precedence that the schools outside of the town are more important than the schools inside of the town.
Yeah.
I mean, when they made that vote, to me, that's exactly what they're saying.
And that's why I brought it up. I was really upset too. When I watched, I was like, oh my gosh, you know, this is not, this is not fair to us. I mean, you got Ryanair with, what was the population, a thousand people and then they're getting like a park of ten and a half million dollars, I think it is. Our park actually ends up being cheaper by the amount of population we look at it, but they're not helping us right now, you know, there, we built a fire station over there and everything and we're paying for all this.
We're, we're talking school resource officers. We're not talking about fairness of our creation or anything else. And we have all of these things. I want our agenda to talk with him about it.
It's just not fair.
I would like, I would like the county to fund the CPD.
You make that up?
Those, well, we can't make them do it. So there's, it's a waste, but I would like to see the county, if you're going to discuss it with them, Randy and Chief, I'm sure you're going to be in discussions with them now and Mike.
It's Randy and, and it's Randy and myself, Craig Meadows and Sherri Blavins at this point.
I understand that.
That was, that was the discussion, I believe, that Tim said you all handled it and that's what we've got the agenda worked on. So we've got, we're getting a meeting date set.
For me personally, I would like to see the county fund our, our resource officers in the towns within the town.
Okay.
That would be an accept for all, not just some.
And I agree with everything you just said.
Thank you.
Are you saying add? Because we, one of our school resource officers is split between the two elementaries and one primary school. Are you saying also see them fund a full-time school resource officer at all three of those individuals?
They fund all the schools.
The same thing we have.
I think.
All five schools, one, one SRO at each one.
Central Montgomery included.
Yeah.
Mark, oh, turn this thing over. You need my throat, so.
I just, I want to make an efficient statement on it. Honestly, I would not be opposed to the county funding the resource officers, but I do feel very strong. We've worked very, very hard for many years, especially the last fifteen, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Our, our, I feel very confident in our relationship with the sheriff's office of Blacksburg. We're going to continue to work together from now on. If I need help at school, the sheriffs will send them for us. If they need help, the county will encourage it. We're going to help them. That, that's what we do. We're going to work together every day to make sure our kids are not opposed to them paying. I feel strong that our officers, our personnel could be empowered in these schools and the county. Of authority on those students, not all, but the authority of our county.
And Chief, I don't think we're implying to take, to take our.
Ms. County.
To take our officers out. We, we, this is more about who's going to, that, that we just think that if they're going to fund everywhere else, then it's the county schools. So it's a funding issue and I agree with you completely. I'd rather have your guys in there that have been there.
And I agree with, I know that's not the council's statement of the personnel.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very, very passionate school program.
Thank you.
We make very strong.
I think it is one of the things too, that if they talk about proximity to the schools, they are probably closer to all the schools. They have the county building on Grand Street. They have, you know, a sheriff's building just downtown. I mean, they, they are here in Christiansburg. And I know that if something was going to happen in one of those schools, I'm more than sure you guys all will come. So. That's why I said that you will go anywhere. So there is a partnership and I don't, and I will have to disagree that if they, you know, if we don't pay for this, they are going to pay for it. Because I'm more than sure they will not look good in front of everybody that pays county taxes.
Well, the reality is if they don't pay for it, I think council by the end of the year need to pay for it. I think recent events nationally, and I would almost invite our attorneys to look in to see if there's any breach of duty by the county for making a decision. Excluding other public schools and not protecting them. I mean, I would, I would not be adverse to.
I think their charge says that they are to protect the students of the schools, does not say how. So if they're going to have their, their deputies in the county, they're going to have the Blacksburg Police Department in the Blacksburg schools. And the Christiansburg Police Departments in the Christiansburg schools, they are basically meeting that criteria of protecting our students. Now, I, I don't know how it's written, don't know it's documented, but I'm sure student safety is in there somewhere. And they're charged with protecting our students. Doesn't say how, but they're charged with protecting.
You're right. But I still would like to have the.
A lot of.
I got a right. I got one right.
Well, I don't, you know, and I heard that and it was, I have protection in, in the schools and I appreciate Hank Parton. I, I don't question any of the organizations, the CBD, the Blacksburg Police Department. Or the Sheriff, Sheriff's Department. I think they're incredible, right? They protect our citizens. But I, I think there is a difference. There is, as Tim said, there's a funding issue in this. And I do think when you decide to place onsite personnel in certain schools, but not other schools. I think it contradicts what you, we always hear from the county. We're about everybody, you know, and these are their facilities. Montgomery County Public Schools, right? And I would just like to see, you know, and if they do prove that, but I would like to know if we can pursue any legal.
And I'd love to see that too, because the reality is a lot of the county supervisors right now, they are, or they say that they are for police. So.
Well, they are for police. I don't think that, my, my issue was.
Financing.
I heard a lot of our, which means county, and there, which means town of Christiansburg.
And Blacksburg.
And Blacksburg, but we're talking about Christiansburg and it was, I mean, almost every one of them said that. I think Ms. Blavins at the end did say they're, she, at the very, very end said she wanted to look at us, helping us with some funding. Which was a small light at the very, very end of it. But what I heard was our and their, Mike, and that's an issue with me.
I saw it.
When these, when these are their facilities.
So is it safe? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Casey.
I was just going to just make sure I understand, just to clarify, it's not that there's any point in which we're pulling our own officers out of these schools. Okay.
That's correct.
I feel that's safe to say, Mayor, that you and Randy have our sentiments as you go forward?
Well, I think so.
And I will bring this to council. It's a hard no, coming from the Board of Supervisors. I do think it's, it's our job to pick this up and fund our officers.
We do fund our officers.
In every school.
There's one resource that's our open split between the three, the two elementary and one primary school. So we would have to add two more.
We have a full-time officer in the high school and a full-time in the middle school and one full-time in the sports.
So but theoretically, if we pick, if we had to pick up one, it would be a following branch? And due to the proximity of the elementary school and the primary school, does that officer, you think, still function?
I think so, yes.
No, that's a good point. They have to say each other.
I have a question for you, Mark.
Well, that's what we already have, right?
Well, he also does following branch as well.
So we have grayhead in our budget, two hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars a year in salaries and benefits. But yet the county just approved for two additional police officers. A hu, what was it? A hundred fifty?
About a hundred forty thousand dollars.
A hundred fifty thousand dollars for two officers.
For two officers. And that doesn't include their cars.
And that doesn't include their cars. So why is theirs costing so much more than ours as far as?
Well, that's not a budgetary item. That's what out of the police department's payroll budget.
But I guess I'm asking because.
I understand. And let me finish, please, Ms. Hicks. That figure in the budget just shows how much we are spending out of the police department salary budget for the school resource officers. That includes the benefits and everything else. I think the base schedule, base salary is about two hundred. And then you add the benefits to it, the forty percent benefits, and it gets you up into that two sixty range. So yeah, that's, that's not, we, we don't have that in the budget. Mark has it in his budget as a salaried police officer.
But, but I guess my question, this is why I was asking Mark this. It's not that I am questioning the money that we're spending in our officers, because I think, you know, when you compare to what they're asking, our budget sounds very good. when you compare to what they're asking, our budget sounds very good. But my question is to you is, when they are trying to find these police officers, they are not going to be competing with paying more money than our police officers. My concern is, let's first say they don't give no money to the town to pay for these officers. Does that mean that because they're spending more money, does it mean that they are going to be paying more money to their officers, which means that we may lose some of our officers to do that job? I'm just asking if that's, if that can, is that a possibility, or do you not-
Their pay is not, have a 2 hours, so I don't feel that we don't need resources there.
Okay.
To answer that question, basically.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We have our orders. Randy Dulling, St. Anderson billing rates.
Make an empty.
Are you ready, Reed?
I'm ready.
If I'm not mistaken, at the first of the year, he came to us to increase the rate $5, and then we basically decided that, well, let's just put it off, and Reed said it's fine, put it off and bring it up in Ju-, in July, well, it's July, so he's asking for the rate, I believe it's to 275.
So, mayor, can I make a motion that we approve his rates?
Yes, sir. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. Okay.
I would like to, next time you increase it, and I know you, you did this, Mike said my request, but make sure we get it in the budget, so we don't have to have this up in the future. Sorry about that, that was on me.
You're going to freeze those rates for a year or two, aren't you?
We don't have to make that adjustment.
All right, we have a motion, we have a motion in a second, on the increase of the attorney's fees. Madam Clerk.
Sir? Councilman Bishop.
Ah.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Six hundred. Staff reports, town manager.
I'll just point out, the Christiansburg Aquatic Center is going to be celebrating their 12th anniversary, and on July 18th, in honor of that, they're going to be offering free aquatic center usage from 10:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m.
What was the date?
The 18th.
18th. 18th.
And council had previously asked that we have a presentation in regards to community support. Val and I had talked about that, as a possibility of a work session. Would you be open to a work session, or would you want to discuss it at a regular meeting?
I don't-
Work session.
Work session.
Work session.
Okay.
Do you have- Be the only item that we have, please.
As far as dates, any date that would be acceptable with council?
Pick five dates and call us back.
Yeah. And I'm out of town next week, so I, no, please don't do it that quick.
That's why it's free.
Would you want, would you want an off Tuesday?
An off, would you prefer an off Tuesday?
Can we please not do it in that little room over there? Can we do it in here or something?
Meter Fish, we can do it anywhere you want to, it's, it's a work session, so there's not going to be any public comments on it.
I understand, but there is a lot more space here. These tables have been moved and arranged in the past, not that I'm asking to do that, but I-
August 2nd be acceptable?
I'm out of town.
Okay.
Randy, why don't you email us five dates?
Sure.
And see if you can get us all-
As far as preferences, would maybe, since it looks like Tuesdays are probably going to be off at least until August 16th, which, was that too late for you? Maybe Mondays?
26th possibility.
Is Mondays preferable?
July.
As long as we can get it in before October, September, I think we're in great shape, and come up with a pause.
Yeah, and-
I'd like to have it done for, I'd like to have the meeting very soon, then it gives us time to go back and-
Well, we also got to wait until, Val said it's going to take at least a week and a half, two weeks to give us our stuff, so, so we don't increase the pressure on her, let's, let's make sure we give her time to get it to us, and then us a week to digest whatever comes in.
How about shooting for, for August 16th, there's a possibility, is it?
What about you send us those dates, you look at our calendars, and then we'll let you know.
And I don't think it has to be, for me, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
And we'll, I guess what we'll really have to do, and it's, this time of year is crazy, it's vacations, it's travel, it's this, that, and the other, it's the day before school starts and all these things, but we're going to have to just find a date that the majority of council can come.
Mm-hmm.
And go from there.
Off Tuesday, right?
And even if I can't be there, it's okay, because my vote is no.
Okay.
Well-
If we, if it is a time that Tim could not, that doesn't accommodate anybody's schedule, could we do that as a Zoom?
Yeah.
So they could maybe chime in?
Yes.
And put him on mute, but he can chime in if what? Okay, very good.
Now we know why you were muted the last time.
We'll figure out a way to get you in there, Tim.
We got you, that's fine. All right, Randy, proceed.
That's all I've got.
Mr. Well-paid attorney, what you got?
Nothing, but thank you all.
Any other staff reports? Ben, how was Spain and Portugal?
Fantastic.
Very good, welcome back. Council reports, Mr. Showalter.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Bishop.
I have nothing to report.
Ms. Hicks.
I do, I get, we are looking into the central business, we're looking at people that will help us with looking at the applications and everything, the, the second, but I guess under other reports, I wanted to, as to see, maybe we can discuss regarding planning commission meetings not happening right now, and why is that?
I guess you can ask the planning director, he's sitting right here.
Well, I think that, you know, that the commission, I have seen a lot of things that have come to town council for months now, where I feel like they should be going to planning commission. One of their statements is that they are responsible for submitting recommendations to town council on a wide variety of land use, use, issues including the town's comprehensive plans, zoning condition, or use purpose, rezoning petitions, and general planning issues. And I feel like a lot of the subjects that, you know, show up on their engineering plans and submittals, they should be going to planning commission, even if it's just for an opinion, not even for a vote.
That is an opinion, I don't know that it's shared by all, but anyway, Ben, you've got that, that is, I think, you cancel them if there is, if the cust-, if the person requests to cancel? I mean, I don't know that, I don't know, I don't know of anything, I don't know of anything that has come before council that was required to come before planning commission that came without coming to planning commission. That's kind of it.
I believe that's, but typically what people have, we have business to conduct, there's applications, or reasons, or either CDP or some other planning, or doing, they're planning commission, needs, does the work and makes his recommendations to you, but seeing as we have no items sometimes, we have enough to cancel.
When was the last time, maybe, you know?
I have to know that.
It's been months now, like, yeah.
Things have been a little bit slower, I think, you know, just we've talked about new prices and things. We, I expect we will probably have some applications in the future, and staff has also been working on some of the items that are more codependent, update related things, that will be in planning commission as well. You should see some more action.
Well, the land adjustments and all those things should have come to planning commission first before, and that's just my-
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Well, that's-
If they're coming in to town.
Hold it, hold it. Okay, is this part of the committees and, all right.
No, it is not, so we'll move on from that, thank you.
This is in the opinion, let's move on.
Ms. Hockett.
Just one update, the street committee also discussed this evening, for your awareness, we approved a sign that was going to go on industrial at Prospect. Ben, I'm not sure if you can pull up that picture, if not, that's okay, I can pass this around. Basically, trucks that are carrying cars are heading down that road, sometimes they're missing the turn onto Prospect, and they're going and getting stuck in the cul-de-sac, and they're having some difficulty turning around, and so it was brought to the street committee to put a sign up that says, car carriers, avoid industrial, drive cul-de-sac, turn left, just as a reminder so they don't miss that, that turn and don't get stuck down the cul-de-sac, and so we approved that, that sign being placed.
Sounds like a winner. Mr. Wilson, is that it? Mr. Wilson?
The sustainability committee will meet this week for our inaugural visit, our inaugural meeting. We've exchanged quite a few emails amongst each other, but our initial face-to-face is Friday morning. That's it.